...this week, actually at Kensington. His name is Robert Bubba Hansen. He died at the age of seventy. He was born in Newburyport in nineteen fifty-two, graduated from Newburyport High in nineteen seventy. Continued his education at the University of Notre Dame and UMass Dartmouth. He was mechanic for the city of Newburyport for thirty-three years. He was a member of numerous clubs in the city, but he especially enjoyed working and driving his nineteen sixty-seven Corinette GTX convertible. Not bad. He survived by his wife Lori McGee and his brother Tom Hansen, in addition to many nieces and nephews. Let's keep this very handsome in his family. Our thoughts are clear. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where John, you follow?
I would be happy to, President. For the meeting of December twelfth at seven P.M., Counselor Preston?
Here.
Counselor Vogel?
President.
Counselor Wallace?
Here.
Counselor Wright?
Here.
Counselor Zede?
Here.
Counselor Cameron?
Here.
Counselor Dunio?
Present.
Counselor Khan?
Present.
Counselor Lane?
Here.
Counselor McCauley?
Here.
And Counsel President Chan.
President. Are there any late files?
I'm pleased to report there are no late files.
All right. Well, come on.
I shall go see.
Those online, please raise your hand. I would see Rick Tainer up if you'd like to speak tonight. I would like to have all the hands up before Cory Johnson gets back to the dials. I see Rick Tainer, and I see Don Brandmark and Donald. I just can't seem to remember their names, but those are the two names I see who will be participating remotely. And we have one in council favor, so I will let Rick Tainer speak first. Rick Tainer, you have two minutes. And you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Rick Tainer, ten Dexter Street, speaking tonight as a member of the planning board. I'm speaking in favor of the Planning and Development Committee's recommendation that the city council accept the proposed tree maintenance easement for the properties twenty-one to twenty-five and twenty-seven Hancock Street. As you're aware, the city's ordinances require that certain development projects construct sidewalks, public shade trees, along their street foot. In this particular case, the existing sidewalk and grass strip were too narrow to accommodate both compliant sidewalk and the required trees, so the developer proposed planting four trees behind the sidewalk on the private block. The planning board accepted this alternative plan. As part of the permitting process, the board requested access and maintenance easement to ensure that the intent of the city ordinances could be followed in the long term. City council action is required to finalize this arrangement, and I hope that you will vote to accept the easement tonight. Thank you.
Good to Mr. Tainer. Next is Don Brandmark.
Hi, Hawaii.
Yes, we can hear you. So, name, address, and you have two minutes.
Don Brandmark and Ronald Dinsman, thirty-six Hale Street, Newburyport, Mass.
Okay. You have your two minutes. If you'd like to speak, please.
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of the people, that's me, and the people on Wilkinson, where we all have sent emails in regards to the proposed curb cut on thirty-four Hale Streets. We do not, none of us want it. We have, well, on Wilkinson Street, thank you. That was my husband that's one. Due to his concerns to maintain the integrity of the cul-de-sac that is here currently. We have now four kids. We just had another one, another child just born. We have four kids that live on this street. It is narrow where they want to put the curb cut. The rest of the curb, the rest of the cul-de-sac is big, nice and round where the houses are part of the cul-de-sac. So, all of us do, due to safety concerns, we all oppose having the curb cut on Wilkinson Street.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon.
And the address, and the address it is on, has always been on Hale Street. It's not a Wilkinson Street property anyway. It has always been a thirty-four Hale Street. And it would add, it would have cars backing out on Wilkes, which add to the already relatively dangerous intersection.
All right. Thank you very much for both of your comments. Appreciate it. All right. So, that brings us back into council, which is Owen Smith.
Hey, good evening. Owen Smith, one seventy-five story avenue. I just wanted to speak briefly about the snow and ice removal plan that you'll be voting and receiving file today. Just today, driving in, I decided I would say something. I'm going to cite today as an example. Driving in from the fork up to Green Street on High Street, I noticed quite a bit of, you know, compacted snow caused by all the pedestrian traffic that goes along that corridor. If I was a resident there and I read the snow plan that you're going to vote on today, it would tell me it's my responsibility. We all know a lot of residents don't read plans. We also know residents, you know, might watch a YouTube video or see a press release. And in the PowerPoint presentation that was a part of that YouTube, they discuss how the city is taking responsibility of that corridor for snow removal, snow and ice removal. So, it's clear, it's important that the residents know exactly in writing in a referable document because this is a liability issue. You know, it's already a lot of brick surfaces, so it's uneven. And, you know, it's really the city's obligation to ensure a safe walking environment for everybody that would be accessible to everyone as well. So, if the city is going to take responsibility, it should be well thought out and articulated in the plan. I think that's all I will say on that matter today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, that is all the comments. Any other comments?
Yeah, it came in the email.
Okay. Consent agenda.
The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for November twenty-eighth. The two communications, communication four fifty-five, which is the net zero report on the West End Fire Station, that's to go to Planning and Development. Communication four fifty-six are letters regarding the curb cut on full Wilkinson Drive and thirty-four Hale Street, that's to go to public safety. There are no transfers. There's one appointment. It's first reading for Jeffrey Matheson, twelve Hart Road, as the electrical inspector until January first, two thousand twenty-four. Following items are removed from their respective committees, budget and finance. Communication four four-nine, four four-eight, order three three-six, transfers one forty and one forty-one. General Government, appointment three fifty-eight. License and permits, communication three eighty-five, three eighty-eight. Communication four four-two and application one sixteen. Neighborhood and City Services, appointments three fifty-one, three fifty-two, three fifty-nine. Two communications, four thirty-nine and four forty-six. Planning and Development, order one, sorry, three ninety-four, ordinance one twenty-five. Communication four hundred and forty-four, appointments three fifty-three and three fifty-seven. Public Safety, four items, application one fifteen, order three ninety-six. Communication four fifty-four, order three eighty-seven. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's? So, you have your mayor's update for sharing appointments. Is there? Can you change?
We have one communication, which is regarding the Firehouse Center for the Arts sing-along parade for this coming Saturday, December twelfth, twelve to one P.M., Merrimack State, High and Green Streets. I might add, time is of the essence.
Motion for emergency preamble, waive the rules.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of waiving the rules for the preamble, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Counselor Dunn.
Point of order, what was the date on that? I think you said the twelfth, but I believe it's the seventeenth.
Number seventeen.
Okay.
I think that's what I said.
Coming in today.
Any other questions? Would motion on the floor is to approve. All those in favor of approving application on seventeen, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Move it right along. Will you transfer first?
May I make a motion, please? Could we waive the rules and take second reading of ordinance one twenty-eight before we start referring things to committee? So that we can get the new committees in, and then we can refer to those, and then at the end, we can move all the, reshuffle all the existing items.
Second.
All right. What is the wording?
The clerk would like to.
So, this is just a motion to waive the rules to take, to take the second reading on ordinance one twenty-eight now?
Got it.
And then I'll make another motion to approve on second.
First and seconded. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of taking out of order, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve ordinance one twenty-eight on second reading?
Second.
All right. It's an ordinance, so we'll call.
This is ordinance one twenty-eight, second reading. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
All right, vote of ten-one. Ordinance passes second reading.
Okay, so now we have a new world.
Yes.
All right, so.
So, the first order is the city council meeting, which is essentially setting up the dates for two thousand twenty-three. Again, time is of the essence. One could argue we could do this on the first meeting, but I think it's better practice.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In the past, when we talked to the city solicitor, we didn't need an emergency on this because it was an internal.
That's a good point.
Would you prefer one?
No.
President?
No?
Move, move to approve then?
Second.
Any other discussion? Did I miss any, any days, something that we called them all?
Looks good to me.
All right. All those in favor of approving order three ninety-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move it right along.
Next order is three ninety-eight, which is actually bringing back to what was there. It expired. It's a snow emergency parking on Auburn Street.
Motion to refer to public works and safety. And public safety? Public works and public safety.
Second.
Can't remember. Whatever it is.
We're going to have to get our copies of that.
All right. All those in favor of approving public works and safety, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move it right along.
Order three ninety-nine, which is with respect to asphalt sidewalk waiver request for the West End Fire Station.
Motion to public works and safety.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Move it right along. All right. All those in favor of approving order three ninety-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Move it right along.
Motion to refer to budget and finance?
Collectively.
I need to recuse for order four oh two.
Oh, sorry.
So noted. I want to take four hundred, four oh one, and four oh three.
So move.
All right. All those in favor of sending four hundred, four oh one, and four oh three to budget and finance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Motion to refer four oh two to budget and finance?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Counselor Wallace, counsel, counsel. All right.
Good.
Fastest recuse.
Yeah. You don't have to leave.
All right.
Ordinance one thirty-one, second reading. This is the fifteen-minute space, parking space on Pleasant Street.
Motion approved on second reading.
Thank you.
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
All right, vote of ten-one. Ordinance passes second reading.
I believe I did skip over the appointment that was in consent, and it doesn't have a tone yet. It's one of the three sixty.
That's, that's true. That does not, I mean, in the past, it hasn't been, but it certainly can be.
In the past, there would have been motion to send to public utilities. We now send to public works and safety.
Second.
I just, I just want to say that I'm going to oppose this motion. I have no problem, but I just want to remind everybody, we're not required to send every appointment to committee. It's a choice, right? And there are certain appointments we must, that's set by rule. And we just did one in general government, and I don't think this merits committee time, personally, so.
All right. Have you any problems with this going as of two?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to second that sentiment that we don't have to send it to committee.
Okay, so I think there's a motion on the floor, though, seconded. Am I right?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of city of public works and safety, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right. Make sure that was okay.
So, just, just point of order, I took it in the consent as that was approval on first reading, at least. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, will there be a second reading?
Next, on January ninth.
So, point of order, it's set to start one-one.
Phil, that's a really good point.
Motion to waive the rules and approve on first reading?
I'd second that.
What was that?
Motion to waive the rules and approve on first reading?
So, you need an emergency, you need an emergency preamble?
Emergency preamble.
What do we, what's the, what's the problem?
It's, the appointment's set for one-one. We meet one-nine.
It's one-one twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four is when it expires.
Okay. Fair enough. I wasn't reading it right.
Okay. I was trying.
I mean.
Yeah, so I think we're good.
If it's not going to committee, why not?
So, we get approved on, again?
On the second.
On the ninth. So, is that, that motion's withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay. So, as it stands now, we'll have second reading for that appointment on January ninth.
My apologies for bringing that one up. All right. Committee items, ad hoc for Brown School property. Counselor Vogel?
Just an update that we're scheduled for Thursday, seven o'clock. I thought it was to be determined, but I believe it's at the, for certain, at the senior community center. The last minutes for the last meeting will be out tomorrow, and we'll have an agenda as well, too.
Okay. Thank you. The ad hoc on Market Landing Park, just to give an update, we did have a meeting a few weeks ago on the naming rights, the order three eighty-nine that Counselor McCauley submitted. It's still in committee. We're going to continue that discussion come January. We had a good discussion regarding how the intent of this order really is just to find a way to maintain, have a, a way to maintain the park in the coming years, so. More to come, that in January on that one. Next committee, budget and finance, Counsel Zede?
Okay, thank you. Motion to receive and file communication four forty-nine and four forty-eight collectively.
Second.
Committee met on December first, which was our last standing meeting of the year, and we discussed both of these. Communication four forty-eight was the package of emails submitted by Counselor Vogel as a communication, and communication four forty-nine was a letter from a resident, Jim McCarthy, requesting an audit of the conservancy. First, on the topic of the letter itself in four forty-nine, the author of the letter did let me know that, that there seemed to be some movement on an audit from the conservancy. Obviously, that's outside of the city, but that, that did seem to be something they were either considering or moving forward with. That was just a report provided by the author, so I'm passing it on to you. We did take some time to discuss further. As we all know, this has been a topic we've covered a few times now in committee and on the council floor. We did have the benefit of having Mike Hennessy join us, the Parks Manager. We also had Andrew Levine, the Chief of Staff. So, we kind of tried to rewind the tape a little bit and just ask, what are the current state of things in terms of what are the outstanding tasks that are supposed to be done in the crossover between the conservancy and the Parks Department? Mike Hennessy reported to us that they felt that there were about four to five plaques that were outstanding and that they were working to close those out. It does seem like there have been some, some communication challenges. There was an email dated twelve-one that I included in your, I didn't put it as a new communication, I just included it in the packet for, for, to be part of the record. And that's from Mike Hennessy regarding going back and forth. So, bottom line is that it seems like there were some challenges figuring out exactly what were the outstanding obligations, and in a sense, whose obligations were there. But as of our meeting, they thought there were four to five plaques left, and that was going to kind of be a clean break, so to say, at that point. Councillors did ask various questions about that and did feel like it was coming to a close in that sense. Some other councillors also had joined us as well, and we continued the conversation onto, you know, the potential mixing of city resources and that of the conservancy taking away from other work. Then we talked about the bench program in particular, as that seemed to be the center of some of the discussion. And one thing we did hear is that the Parks Manager is working in concert with the Parks Commission to develop a bench policy, bench program, and that that is actively being discussed on the commission, and they plan to set some kind of fees. And then, you know, it was asked if they needed to come before the council, and they do, just as we ratify all of the different fees. And then, further on that same topic of benches, you know, some policy level questions, you know, when you, when you take a bench or you buy, buy a bench or sponsor a bench, how long is your sponsorship for? Is it intended to be forever and ever, or is it a period of time? Those who are familiar with the ad hoc waterfront know that we're contending with similar questions on that committee as well as the, as the waterfront park takes shape. Mike Hennessy reported, we have approximately one hundred and seventy-three benches in the city that have been sponsored, if that's the correct word, and sort of felt that two hundred would eventually become the max just by space and to try and keep the parks from seeming overly commercialized, even though they are often memorials for, for family members and so forth. To continue on, our conversation took a turn into financial policy a little bit and discussion about how department heads handle when they receive potential gifts or donations and what that sort of thing is. Then we talked a little bit about the city's utilization of a bookkeeper, which has come up in the conversations over the past several budgets that I can recall. And the bookkeeper was doing youth services, parks, parking, and for a time, council on aging. That seems to have shrunk down a little bit. So, that was a discussion. And then, we had some additions that it's not, then we finally ended where it's not just gifts, it's also grants. And then we had a conversation about the famous MGL that we've been talking about, fifty-three, forty-four A, and the acceptance thereof. So, in, in conclusion, we did ask for a couple of documents or some information. One is, you know, what's the plan to kind of unwind or finish off all the remaining, any remaining crossover obligations? Some kind of a policy for department heads. The Finance Department Auditor's Office does maintain a list of financial policy. Questions about, more about what the bookkeeper was working on and what those books are and how they are or are not related to the city's books and munis. And then, if there were any additional resources from KP Law or the DOR or others on how gifts work. And we basically talked about four forty-eight and four forty-nine together. They are communications, so no action, but, but recommendation to receive and file.
Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Council President. I want to stand in object to, in opposition of these being received and filed. I think it's, would benefit the council if they stayed in committee and open. The Chair of Budget and Finance just expressed that there's a lot of questions still outstanding with regard to all of these things. I think that we have, there's, there's been accusations of fraud, there's, there's been communications about whether or not, you know, who's, who's in charge of what. We have an open position of a Parks Director. I think that there's a lot of questions that still need to be brought together. I think that these questions that are outstanding around these documents that were just expressed also need to be addressed. So, I'd like to see it stay open. I'd like to see it stay in committee, and as these other items come in at some point in time, I think that we pull this all together. And we really have a sit-down, let's figure out where we are with regard to the parks, with regard to all of these policies and so on and so forth. So, I think it's in our, our best interest to leave it in committee. If we receive and file it, things that are received and filed tend to just be put aside and not worried about anymore. And I'd like to keep this open for that reason. So, I would like to encourage all to oppose receiving and filing it, just leave it in committee, and as other things come along and we build enough momentum to where we can have a sit-down somehow with the administration as to where all these open items are, I think that would be a benefit for the whole community as well as ourselves.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Further discussion? Counsel Zede?
I just, as usual, I like to deliver the committee report first, but I just want to give my, my conclusion. So, I, I think that after several months of looking at this, to me, and this is my opinion, to me, it's clear that there were several deficiencies and that, you know, those deficiencies were related to, you know, as simple things as accounting, but also tremendous amount of gray between the city and the conservancy. This is my opinion. And I think that despite maybe some best intentions, friends of groups have to understand that we're all operating under the state law, we're all under, operating under the state charter, the city charter, pardon me, and city ordinance. We've already got a number of gifts now that have come in tonight into the city council packet. I look at that as a step in the right direction to opening up the transparency and showing where the gifts are coming from, where they're going, and giving councillors and by extension the public the ability to sort of see what commitments are we making and so forth. In fact, a lot of the committee was about who can even create commitments for the city. You know, a private organization can't make a commitment for the city. The city can only make commitments for itself, so if we make a promise to install a bench, then that's on us. Somebody cannot promise on our behalf that they will install one. As far as receiving filing versus not budget, I mean, to the extent, you know, that I could speak as the Chair, the committee is more than happy to handle any business. But in fairness to the committee, I think we've exhausted these two specific communications. If there's more information in them that we can glean, by all means, we can keep them. But I work hard to keep the, the budget and finance roster reasonable, and if you'd like to keep them on there, they're simply going to fall to the bottom and because we have so much other work that we need to do, when and if new information comes in, and
other work that we need to do, when and if new information comes in, and I hope there is more, we'd be happy to ingest it at that time and adjudicate it accordingly. But I think at this point, you know, we don't need a marker for it, personally, in my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Zede. Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I, I'm backing the committee's recommendation of receiving and file. I remember, oh, a couple of months ago, when letters came in, and we received and filed them, and then we had debate, and the answer was that, well, we don't throw them away, we read them, we file them, we keep them, they're just not active. They're not active in a committee. I had attended the meeting and saw that the committee had done its due diligence and exhausted all of the discussion points that they had on these two particular items. Again, to have the inference that, to receive and file is to, you know, throw them away, or put them in the bottom drawer, or not pay attention to them, I think is inaccurate, because we do receive and file a number of different documents. It's just, it's there, it's part of the record. And if more information comes in, as some came in today, and will continue to come in on this particular item, I think they're all additive. And I would welcome a larger discussion as to rewriting some of these rules about Friends Groups, and financial best practices, and things like that. I'll use as an example. I had a conversation last week with the Finance Director on two particular items, which I was surprised to not see as late files. There were the Friends of Newburyport Trees that I read in the paper was, made a donation for $40,000 and received a gift, and had moved on it. I also received emails and read in the paper that the NYSE had received a $5,000 donation that they're in the process of spending. And neither one of those, as I had asked the Finance Director, are now included in the package. So, I don't know how these gifts can be received and then spent along the way. Here's two examples that have slipped under the radar, or are being ignored. I don't know which. So, again, for this particular matter, I think we've exhausted the work of the committee. But I also would welcome, as the Counselor at Large had mentioned, we do need a larger conversation on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Further discussion? All right, the motion on the floor is to receive and file Communication 449, 448. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. One no.
Counselor Zede.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve Transfer 140, which is $40,000 to, and $20,000 from the Harbor Master retained earnings to Market Landing Park expansion.
Second.
Okay. The committee met on this twice. First is to just give you a little bit of detail about what the transfer is for. In the process of doing the waterfront park, there's a transformer that effectively needs to be relocated, and while it's in the process of being dealt with, that would leave the area around there without power. And so, this transfer, the $60,000, in total, is designated or designed to provide funding to create a temporary, to create temporary, you know, whatever the sort of technology is, to give temporary power down to the area there. So, that's what the project is for, so it's a temp power project. In terms of the funding sources, there's actually a little bit going on here with the 60K. It's effectively being split three ways, really, is what it appears to be. So, we have $60,000 in total, $20,000 is coming from the city, $20,000 is coming from the waterfront trust, and $20,000 is coming from the Harbor Master retained earnings, and that in total is making up the $60,000. Both the Harbor Commission, as well as the waterfront trust, have met and have confirmed their support for this. The Harbor Commission most recently was December 7th is when they met, and then I received a communication from them that they did approve of the $20,000 with one caveat, and I'll mention that in a moment. And then the waterfront trust also met twice, and I believe they didn't complete the work on the first meeting, but they did in the second meeting. So, in terms of the, the little caveat that I mentioned is, the Harbor Commission would like it to be up to $20,000, meaning if the project doesn't consume the full amount, that it would proportionally be returned back to its original sources. This is not an atypical request, sometimes we do this on transfers. I'm going to make a motion, we did not have that at the time of committee, so it wasn't discussed in committee, but I'll make a motion to amend, and basically, it would be language that, again, proportionately, so you have a third, a third, a third, so if it comes in less, it'll be a portion to third each to its original source. I make that motion, please.
Second.
Okay, we'll vote on that.
Any further discussion?
My, okay.
Yes.
Give me the specific of that.
Yeah, the transfer is conditioned that, should the project at completion come in at less than the $60,000, that any excess funds will be returned back in proportion to each of the original funding sources.
Thank you.
Counselor Vogel.
I just want to clear that notion of in proportion.
Yeah.
So, they get 20, 20, of their 20, the 20, they get 20, the percentage of their 20,000 to 20 of the 40, 60.
Yeah, it's a third.
They don't split it three ways.
No, they, if it came in $9,000 less, let's just say, then each of the three would get $3,000 back.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine with me, but that's...
Everybody's putting their card in, and we're just going to split it in, split it up three ways, whatever it ends up being.
Okay, but they're not putting in the same card.
I'm sorry?
They're not putting the same amount in?
No, not putting in the same amount of money. You got 20, 40, and 60.
One's 40,000, one's 20,000.
Yeah.
There are, the total amount of the transfer, 60K.
Yeah.
20K from the city, 20K from the trust, 20K from the Harbor Commission, a third, a third, a third. So, it's wrapped in here as 40K, because the 40K is 20K from the city and 20K from the waterfront trust. That's how the numbers work. Did that make sense?
Yep.
That does, that does.
Okay, so it's 60K, 20 grand apiece. So, everybody's coming in equal, everybody comes out equal, comes out in proportion.
The motion is to amend, add the appropriate apportionment language, and that was seconded by me.
And just to add the last piece here, is we did talk about, quote-unquote, "How does the city take money from the trust?" You know, why is the 40K, why is the 20K included in the 40? You know, welcome to the gray area of municipal finance. I mean, the trust is, it's sort of a quasi-city entity, right, but it's not, it's just wrapped up in this whole gift and grant conversation, but we didn't really have an answer when I talked to the finance, you know, we just wrapped it in here, and then the money will come through. Keep in mind that we have a standing agreement with them, where we pay them every month to then pay their contractor to take care of the lawn, so that's the numbers, though, 20, 20, 20.
I see. One more hand up for discussion on the amendment, Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, just quickly, is, do we have the 20, 20, 20 in writing from the waterfront trust and the Harbor Master? Did we get email confirmation that they both, both Commissions had approved the request?
Yes, the Harbor Commission transmitted to me a letter on letterhead stating that they were in approval, and I didn't get a direct communication from the waterfront trust, but the Planning Director provided me with written language. I don't think they had published their minutes by then, but I have no reason to question their validity at this time. Thank you.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor is for the amendment.
Correct.
So, all those in favor of the amendment language, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Counselor Zede.
Next up is a motion to approve Transfer 141, which is $500,000 free cash to the Stabilization Trust Fund.
Second.
Okay, so, just a quick recap on where we are with free cash, because that's the source of funding. We started off with a 4.3 bumper crop of free cash. We have utilized 700K of it approximately for the tax rate. You'll recall that conversation, the Parklets, $18,000 transfer, and then the Culvert of 656K. So, those are all roundish numbers, so we're at approximately a $2.6 million balance at that point. The request here is to go take 500 out of that 2.6 and place it into the stabilization fund. Just as a quick refresher on the stabilization fund, as we just talked about this in committee, it's six in and eight out, so six to vote money into the fund, and eight to take money out. A councillor on the committee did ask, you know, what are the scenarios that the Finance Director Auditor would typically expect us to actually draw from this fund? And really, the answer was, you know, essentially, some sort of a catastrophic situation would be the typical intended, when you'd go to the stabilization fund. In other words, you don't go to it when you need a little bit of spending money, you go to it when you have a serious emergency or problem. In terms of the percentage, there is a policy target to try and put a percentage of our overall budget, operating budget into the stabilization fund. This transfer would put us slightly over that. We did talk about that, should we go a little bit over, should we hold some cash back? But the Finance Director felt that this made a lot of sense, given the sort of economic uncertainty coming, and that, keep in mind, that every year that goes by, the operating budget goes up. So, if we don't put money in, the percentage recedes, right? So, his thought was, you know, depending on how next year looks like and so forth, it may be a year where we don't put any money into the stabilization fund, and the percentage will fall, but it will fall and still be in the acceptable range. So, these are some of the policy discussions that we had. We also did talk briefly about ARPA, because that's another sort of pot of money that's out there, and the Chief of Staff indicated that's something that is going to be looked at early in the new year. And then, we talked about, you know, what are the, or what's next for free cash, and the answer was, kind of seems like we're going to hold off for a little bit, maybe, usually, we don't do a lot of free cash stuff until the spring, those have been on the council for some years, so probably might look something like that. So, in the end, the committee recommends to you that we approve this transfer by a vote of 3 to 0.
Thank you, Counselor Zede. Further discussion? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of approving Transfer 141, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Counselor Zede.
Just a motion to refer back to Committee Order 336. I just think that was a clerical, it wasn't supposed to come out.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of sending 336 back to committee, say aye.
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 And that's it for Budget and Finance, just two last things. One is a reminder that the intent is to talk about 59 low after we have our holiday break. And just a thank you to my two colleagues, we processed a lot of work, a lot of business, we had a lot of meetings, but I think we had a pretty good year, so thank you to both of you, appreciate your time and your work together. And that's it for Budget.
Here, here on that one. Budget and Finance is a tough one. Education.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So, we had our last meeting on Monday, December 5th. All members were present. It was a little bittersweet, we got a chance to talk about the council committee reorganization, and spent most of the time talking about how do we maintain and maybe keep going on communicating with the school committee, or with the schools, and the council. And one of the things that came up was, you know, brainstorming on the mayor's update, maybe including something from the schools, because we really did, you know, get some good information from the superintendent, who was always present at our meetings. We also talked a little bit about how do we also use opportunities to meet jointly, like we do in November, when we talk about the budget times and the kind of forecast for the finances. And I think one of the things that came up from that is maybe to do another kind of joint of the school committee and the City Council, be our elected bodies. And one of the things that came up, it was actually suggested by the superintendent, is, you know, professional development, or is there an opportunity, since we tend to gauge the same types of maybe conversation with the public, is there a way we could have a facilitated conversation? That might be an idea for next year, on how can we deal with public perceptions or public concerns with what we are doing here as a body? So, I thought those were really good ideas, and while it's a bittersweet moment, I know that my colleagues here, we really did enjoy the time spending on the Education Committee, but I feel like we had some really good outcomes on how we can move forward and keep in touch with what the schools are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khan. So, in general government, motion to approve Appointment 358.
Second.
So, as Counselor Zede correctly stated, this is probably our quickest general government meeting ever, lasting all of four minutes. This is to approve Paul S. Cardachi to be the Constable for City Business. We spoke to Mr. Cardachi, he's been our Constable for 12 years now. He has, in prior life, worked in law enforcement for 40, wants to continue on. This appointment will be for an additional three years. We voted 3 to 0 to approve the reappointment of Mr. Cardachi to being our City Constable. Discussion? All right. Roll call?
Roll call on the appointment of Paul Cardachi. Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne, you.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes. So, I take the comments from the Chair of Education Committee to heart, since some of that work is going into the General Government Committee for the next year, so we will definitely take those comments and do our best to fulfill those. So, moving right along, Counselor Lane, license and permits.
Yes, we had four items that we took up. The first two were STRIUs, these were communications from our Building Department, Fire Department. STRIU is not defined in Mass Codes, so these are basically setting our position on it at this point, and those came with a 3 to 0 recommendation to receive and file.
Second.
All right.
Like I said, these were in committee almost a year. They were communications, again, from the Building Department, Fire Department, just clarifies when sprinklers may be, may be required in STRIU, but again, kind of in limbo, so with that, the receiving and file.
Thank you, Counselor Lane. Counselor Vogel, discussion?
I did have a question, thank you. If I may direct it to the Chair, the, what is it, number, sorry, 385. So, the last paragraph of the, you know, "Given the ambiguity and the contrary nature of 780 CMR, they respectfully request that the City Council not act on licensing STRIUs until the Commonwealth defines its position and more clarity." Did you take that up in the committee? I'm sorry that I missed the meeting, and I was wondering what conclusions you came to with regard to that last paragraph?
We did, and it is pretty ambiguous at this point, because we don't have a position on STRIUs ourselves. So, these, again, these were coming from the Fire Department and the Building Department, letting us know where the state of Mass stands. Again, that was of last January, so I don't have an update in terms of where they stand now, or if STRIU is defined even at this point in the state of Mass. But in terms of new report, we are where we are.
Okay. Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, just to support what the Chair is saying, technically speaking, all short-term rentals violate Mass Fire Code, so that has been a conundrum for quite some time. And so, 385 kind of clearly defined that there's a problem here, and there's not a matching definition. But through conversation and discussion, 388 updated that and usurped it, right? And the discussion really was, what could we live with, right? Other communities are processing short-term rentals and not requiring sprinklers for anyone. So, they clearly defined what it was, they put a stake in the ground in terms of a lodging house, et cetera, shared kitchen facilities, et cetera, along the way. And that more closely aligns with what the state fire codes should say, but at this particular time, no changes have been made to the state code.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor of receiving and filing 385 and 388, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Lane.
Application 116, State Street Auto Repair Second-Hand License. The owner's wife, Dana was present, this is a reoccurring renewal. They had all their signatures, all their paperwork were in line. Primarily, they do automotive repair, but at times, they do sell motor vehicles. This came with a 3-0 recommendation to receive and file, to approve, excuse me.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving Application 116, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And lastly, was Communication 442. This is a request for an A-frame sign at New England Sketchbook, which is 1R Water Street. Standard sign, it's set in the stone bed that's right there, aside Valbarra Designs. This came in with a 3 to 0, 3 to 0 to approve with the contingency that the neighbor, the abutter at Valbarra was in approval and had been approached. I spoke with her, she had no problem with it at all. So, this comes with a 3-0 motion to approve.
Second.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor of approving Communication 442, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Counselor Lane?
Nope, not at this time, that, we do have the one, we still have the one item that's still in there, the short-term rental unit rules. Those are waiting to see where that falls.
Thank you, Counselor Lane. Counselor Wallace, Neighborhood and City Services.
Yes, thank you, President Shan. I have quite a few items here, so bear with me. First, motion to approve Appointment 351, Jean Berger to the Tree Commission.
Second.
Second.
All right. Ms. Berger is a certified arborist. She did a brief stint on the Tree Committee back in the late 2000s, I believe. She has been very active in the community with Friends of Newburyport Trees, FONTS, for the last six to seven years, and she's ready to continue to give back to the committee and rejoin the commission. And her appointment was approved 3 to 0 out of committee.
All right. Further discussion? Roll call?
Roll call on the appointment 351. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunnehew?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes. All right. Motion to approve appointment 352, Stephanie Pellegrini to the Tree Commission.
Second.
Ms. Pellegrini has also been very active with the Friends of Newport Trees. She has been on their board for about six years. She is very interested in engaging more with constituents and helping to educate and came very highly recommended from her colleagues on the Tree Commission, or former Tree Commission. It came out of committee three to zero for approval.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, roll call.
On appointment 352, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunnehew?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes. All right. Motion to approve appointment 352, Stephanie Pellegrini to the Tree Commission.
Second.
Ms. Pellegrini has also been very active with the Friends of Newport Trees. She has been on their board for about six years. She is very interested in engaging more with constituents and helping to educate and came very highly recommended from her colleagues on the Tree Commission, or former Tree Commission. It came out of committee three to zero for approval.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, roll call.
On appointment 352, Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunnehew?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes. All right. Motion to approve appointment 359, Robert Ulig to the Tree Commission.
Second.
Bob Ulig is a professional landscape architect. He was the Chair of the Original Parks Commission and was around for about 25-plus years. He also was a member of the NRA. And he enjoys the city and he's interested in making the city a better place to live and looks forward to working in the committee. Came out of committee with the recommendation three to zero.
Thank you. Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to add a contingency, actually a amendment to this. And the contingency is the applicant provide proof of residency.
Second.
Second.
The reason for this is, I know it's highly unusual, but this particular applicant was removed from a board because he had moved out of the city and violated our residency permit. And it was tracked down through license and motor vehicle. So part of what I'm asking is that prior to appointment, he provide, the applicant provide proof of residency to the clerk's office, specifically license and motor vehicle registration. Thank you.
So that's...
Second.
Okay. So we, clerk, clarify this one for me. Are we going to vote, approve the appointment contingent on this or...
I would vote on the amendment first and then the appointment.
Okay.
So what I have is a motion to amend by adding the applicant shall prove residency to the clerk's office by providing a license and registration showing a Newport residence.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two noes? Counselor Cameron, Counselor Vogel. Got it. I think the amendment passed. So it would be motion approve the appointment as with the amendment.
Roll call.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunnehew?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Appointment with the subject to is approved.
Counselor Khan?
Sorry. I meant to raise this earlier, but I do want to specify, and I have not looked at this, but some of our commissions don't require residency, and I cannot remember which. But when we went through the ordinance review, there were some committees that didn't. So I don't know how Tree, the Tree Commission is. I did not have a chance, but I supported this amendment. But I do want to point that out, that we do have some boards and commissions that don't require residency. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. I'll double check that.
Can I, so I was unaware of that. So that's an interesting wrinkle. That may change my vote on the amendment. If it's not required that the commissioner be a resident, I would not feel the same about my amendment to have them prove their residency.
Clerk Jones?
Yeah, I think what you're talking about is a motion to reconsider. However, the prevailing side cannot, actually, the prevailing side can.
You have to be the prevailing side.
So she can. She's in chess.
So I'm not giving it a motion, but I think that's what you're talking about.
Counselor Khan?
Thank you for recognizing me. This happened with the Council of Aging. That's why I remembered this conversation, because that was something they didn't understand. So, but I didn't get a chance to peruse everything to kind of find out which boards and commissions did not. But I do know this came up with a couple of those conversations. So, but again, if, you know, if we had time or if someone can look it up really quickly, that's something that I would be open to hearing. But there were specific boards and commissions that we looked at the Code of Ordinances where it said that and some that did not. So we recognize that when we reviewed the ordinances, that should we be aligning everything to say and require residency or not? And we never resolved it. So that's just something I just wanted to point out.
I think Chief of Staff Levine's gone to his computer. Counselor?
Maybe the clerk understands this better, but so when we request proof of residency for a commission that would require residency, is vehicle registration and license the appropriate?
Residency is one of those areas we could debate forever, you know. Generally, under our ordinances, we define residency with both. I'll give you an example, is when someone needs a permit to park their vehicle on the streets, in our code, it says they shall have both. Depends. I mean, you can define it either way. I mean, it ultimately comes down to, some people rely on the IRS proof of residency, some people rely on a registration, some people rely on license, some people rely on both.
Counselor Zee?
So, you know, this is a risk here because you usually want to read these things for longer. But the Tree Commission statute does not state that they must be a resident. However, under 2-62 residency requirement, which is, in our ordinances, not in the Charter, it's an ordinance, it says unless otherwise allowed by law, all members of multiple-member bodies must be residents of the city at all times. And the Tree Commission is a multiple-member body, I would venture to say. So, you know, I think you have to explicitly say they don't have to be. And my recollection is in the Council on Aging explicitly said they don't have to be a resident. So I think that, and that, to me, stands to reason that the default is they must be a resident of the city. Again, there's your Holiday Inn Express legal opinion.
Counselor Vogel? And then Counselor Khan?
Could you just repeat? What was that second part? Where did you find that second?
That is Article 3, Division 1, Section 2-62 residency requirement.
Three?
Just if you want to, if you're in munich code, if you search for 2-62, you should find it.
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Khan?
Oh, no, I was just, sorry, I wanted to clarify. We added that they have to be a resident for Council on Aging, for the board, but members could not be. So I just wanted to clarify, that was something they added. But a lot of these, we noticed that not all the boards and commissions had explicitly stated it. And that was just, I'm just calling that out.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Donahue's first, then Counselor Preston.
Thank you, Chair. Based on what I've just heard and also my experience, just my two cents in that, I think the example of the Council on Aging is a little bit different than a lot of the other commissions because it's more of a quasi-city entity. And I think they have a little more unique guidelines and rules. But the commissions, from what I've typically experienced, the residency requirement is due to the ordinance. It's not necessarily spelled out in the specific commission's rules. But I am, I've always been of the understanding that you do have to live, you do have to be a resident to serve as a volunteer on one of our commissions. So that's my two cents of what I understand.
Thank you, Counselor Donahue. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate the quick work from the Ward 1 counselor. That clarifies one piece of the puzzle to me, but I'm back to this piece around the utilization of vehicle registration and license being the appropriate. It occurs to me that I could register a car in a different town while I still live here. And therefore, to me, that would not be the appropriate avenue for establishing residency. For me, it would be much more founded in tax documentation. I don't know. Or maybe the clerk has a better suggestion. It's just the car seems wrong.
Let me further state, that's why I mentioned the IRS. Some people do. But I don't think the clerk should be in the business of reviewing somebody's 1040. Just doesn't seem right. And then there's also, where are you registered to vote?
I like that much better.
Counselor Zee?
Yeah, so there's no Holiday Inn Express answer for residency. We've learned that through parking and short-term rentals and numerous other things. So my suggestion to the counselor pondering this one is to consider the amendment and extension of our appointment powers rather than debating. We can decide right now that this is what we want for residency in this case. And based on the vote that has now been taken, that's the standing decision in this specific case. It does not mean that that's the case forever, et cetera. If you want my editorial, I think this is the most reasonable thing you could ask for. I don't think you want to get into, you know, tell us where you put your head down the last 364 days or 183 days and get into that mess. So.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Zee.
Sorry. I would like to make a motion to reconsider.
So if I might, you'd be reconsidering then the entire motion with the amendment?
Yes.
Second.
Well, sorry, point of clarity. I'm actually, I'm looking to reconsider the amendment, not the...
You've got to do that.
Back into it.
I'll get back all the way.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk Jones, where are we?
I think we have a motion to reconsider the motion to approve as amended on the floor.
Okay.
First and seconded. Anyone remember if that's two-thirds, majority? Looking it up right now. Can't remember.
Doing Robert's Rules and the Fly tonight?
Can it be verbal? Majority.
All right. Roll call.
Okay, on the motion to reconsider, Counselor Preston?
So this is the motion to reconsider, not the, okay, yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunnehew?
No.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion fails. Motion to approve with the amendment stands.
All right. Counselor Wallace?
All right. Motion to receive and file communication 439, letter from Owen Smith regarding Parks Department.
Second.
This letter came in on October 21st, and just briefly highlight it. I will not do it justice as compared to the detail that Mr. Smith usually provides. It was concerns with the Parks merger with DPS and wanting everybody, or wanting the departments to be proactive in their maintenance and inspections, specifically the Parks Department. He had concerns about the safety of some of the playground equipment. But Mike Hennessy has now become certified, and I know Mr. Smith has been very pleased with that. So that is now covered in the city. He also mentioned that the critical infrastructure needs to be protected and a priority. So if there is a merger, if there's not a merger, that that is something the city needs to focus on, water, sewer, streets and sidewalks. Committee voted to receive and file three to zero.
All right. Further discussion? All right. All those in favor of receiving and filing communication 439, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
All right. Motion to receive and file communication 446, snow and ice plan.
Second.
This was the annual plan that comes into the council. I think it's per ordinance, describing the different processes that DPS, the administration, use during snowstorms. Let's see. It was not submitted last year. I don't know why, but that was a different administration. So it was good to have it back this year. And there was also some confusion on the PowerPoint presentation versus the actual snow and ice plan. And I think in the future, perhaps we can combine those into one document. There were many comments, questions about clearing sidewalks at the corners for ADA accessibility, making sure that Story Ave gets their sidewalks cleared somehow, even if it's, you know, massed-up property, making sure that DPS has enough resources. And then just being open to getting, having a dialogue during the winter and so that we can change the plan as necessary with the new administration and new issues. Because the plan has not changed that much in at least a couple of years, other than maybe some blue light locations. So that is received and filed. But I encourage the new Public Works and Safety Committee to work proactively with DPS throughout the winter to address resident issues because we all will hear them. So, thank you.
Counselor Preston?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend communication 446 to reflect the updated snow and ice plan that is currently posted on the city website. There have been some fairly minor tweaks to it, but it has the most recent information. I think it would benefit the public to have this version be the version that the city council votes on.
Okay. Does everyone understand that one? All right. Voting on the motion to amend communication 446. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
All right. So motion on the floor is to actual receive and file 446. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
All right. I think I'm going to be next up under Planning and Development. But before we get to that, NCS, we are going to meet next week. But I don't know if, the fact that we just changed the committee, how that would affect it. But anyways, but we're going to meet next week anyway. Just make sure that we close anything out or whatnot. And it is, it is bittersweet. It was the first all-female committee. And now we're being dismantled, but you know.
No, the committee is.
The committee. Great. But yes, it's been, it's been great to work with my colleagues here. And we have one more meeting. I'm so sorry. I was due right before Christmas. And that'll be next Tuesday. I'll update that on the calendar.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Wallace.
Could I make a?
Yes, Counselor Zee?
I wanted to ask, I was going to make a motion to waive the rules and actually, I don't know what the Chair thinks, but to take 299, Communication 299 and Ordinance 103 and send those to New Public Works and Safety, and then to Communication 406 and send it to the New City Services. Because those are the three remaining items in the committee. But I don't want to mess if you're going to, if you're going to meet. No?
I think we're racing to see what those are.
Yeah, I know. No, I would, yeah, I was, I was under the intent that we would discuss that in committee and either close them out in committee or, or recommend that they go out there. I guess I didn't realize that we were finalizing committees.
Tonight?
Or, yes, I mean, I kind of did, but.
Counselor McCauley?
Question for the Council President. While we did vote on it tonight, it actually is future. We can pick a day to do that if, if, you know, the Council President so approves on that. And I think that, you know, allowing NCS to close out their business might be the right thing to do.
And I believe in the change. It's stated starts January 1st. So you should meet next week and finish that off. And we'll figure it out when we get into January. So enjoy your meeting next week.
You're all welcome to come.
All right.
Not comedian whore.
Planning and development?
Thank you, President. I'm going to recuse myself from the first item, and Counselor Wallace will be leading that discussion.
Okay.
The first one, 39?
Which is ordinance.
394.
Order 394 Hancock Street, tree maintenance. I live nearby, so I'm going to...
Okay. Counselor Wallace?
Last one. Okay. Motion to approve order 394 Hancock Street easement.
Second.
All right. This one, as, as Planning Board member Tainter had mentioned in the public
So just a quick question, that the city may maintain them, but who is going to maintain them?
Counselor Yamb.
Thank you. So the requirement to maintain the trees is going to be part of the condo documents in going forward, so the private property owners will be the ones who are required to. The easement that is being presented has language in there that specifically says that the city has no obligation to maintain them, but they have the ability to through the easement if required.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Counselor Zede.
I just wanted to say, I'm going to oppose this. That just doesn't make any sense to me on the face of it. Why would we even want an easement to care for something on private property is not clear to me. The intent, in my opinion, of the original ordinance is to drive a public benefit, a public gain. Planting trees on private property does not really represent to me a significant public gain, and in this case, the little public gain, which is maybe you could see them from the street, or maybe you could argue that there's a global benefit to just having more trees planted, is offset by the fact that I think in 20 years, somebody will find the easement and utilize it, and another argument, which is you should probably accept the private way, or you are obligated to maintain these, I appreciate the language that's been edited. The other piece I wanted to ask about was that, another thing that was circling around was the requirement for insurance to be provided by the city to the grantor of the easements, and I didn't know if that ever got resolved in committee, or if the planning director followed through on completing that discussion.
If the planning director is here...
He is indeed.
I would defer to him.
Director Port, allowed you to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Are you really hearing me?
Yes.
Yes, so the insurance provision, I think it was referred to the city's insurance policy, so there's no need to make an adjustment. My concern was that they not have, after the Counselor's point, a provision that was in violation or would require an increased city's insurance policy, and that is not the case here according to the Finance Director.
Okay. All right, Counselor Preston.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, I was actually involved in this when I was Chair of the Tree Commission before I was on the council, and so the reasoning that we put these trees onto private property, there were very large trees in the sidewalk there that had to come down, they were destroying the sidewalk and frankly, the pavement, but that section of street really lost a lot of big trees, and we really were passionate about bringing big trees back, but there was not space within the sidewalk to be able to utilize, or to be able to plant large trees. So the intention at the time was for the trees to be on private property, so, and be maintained by the private residences. So when this came through, I initially had concern, because I felt that this was moving the responsibility of maintaining the trees to the city. It's very clear now, we made amendments in committee, and it's very clear now that the intention is for the residents to maintain those trees. The easement simply gives us the opportunity that in the event that the residences, the residents weren't maintaining those trees, that the city could have the opportunity to maintain them. And while I do very much take the Ward 1 counselor's comments, I think, you know, there's some validity to the fact that 20 years from now, someone may come along and have no idea why these easements even exist. I think at the end of the day, there's no real risk to the city by taking these easements. It's very clear in the language that the purpose is for the private residents to maintain these trees, and at the end of the day, there are real people who are going to be our neighbors and constituents and taxpayers in the city, who will have real consequences if this easement is held up, because they cannot have a certificate of occupancy if this easement is not approved by the council tonight, and there are real consequences, not only to the developer, but to the people who are moving into these homes, because they have rate locks, and they have houses that they're selling on the other end, and they need to get out of, and in my mind, there is no reason for us to say no to these easements, because there is ultimately no risk to the city. Thank you.
Counselor McCauley, then Counselor Wright.
Thank you, Counselor President. I just have a couple of questions, I don't know who's going to answer them or what, right? So my understanding is there are private trees on private land, but the city has easement rights to go in and maintain them if we do. So fast forward 20 years, let's say the Ward 1 counselors' fears are not met, right? It's just we have big 20-year trees, and the residents decide for one reason or another they want to cut the trees down. Do they have the right to cut the trees down, or is the city somehow obligated to evaluate those trees, actually do the work to maintain, you know, to cut those trees down and haul the information out? I just don't know, you know, we're talking about a symbiotic relationship here, and I don't know where the rules of engagement are, and if somebody can explain through an example like that, I'd be grateful. Thank you.
If anyone in the council can, or Director Port? Did you hear that conversation?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
As I understand it, the plans that were approved by the board required the applicant to maintain what was proposed on that plan, including the vegetation, so they would be obligated to maintain it. They're running into a conflict with the city, I think we'd obviously have to have a discussion with the acting Tree Commissioner, the Tree Warden, to the Counselor's point, and this is the type of thing, I think, to the Counselor's point, that if you try to work on it, or if the boards get to work out earlier in the process, so that any discussion of this nature is worked out in five grand before the boards end up placing conditions, but in this case, I think that the owners would essentially be obligated to maintain the vegetation, if there was a issue there, obviously the city officials, the residents, so the owners at that point would have that discussion.
Counselor Wright.
So in regard to the future interpretation of this easement, the Planning Board decision specifically states in this instance that they cannot come back for any additional relief from the plan that is currently being approved. So they can't ask for it to become a private way, they can't ask for anything else, based on the specific Planning Board conditions that were in the Planning Board decision. Now, I do understand that over time, the easement exists here, it's on record, the Planning Board decision will be on record with the city, and those two things might get separated in the future, there's no accounting for that, but it is specifically noted in the Planning Board decision that they'll be granted no relief in the future.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Counselor Zede.
Thank you. I just wanted to say two things. One is, I just respectfully disagree that there's no harm. I mean, I think that's the debate, right, is what could the harm be in taking it? It seems like a freebie, why not? But that horse, I think, has been beaten enough. My bigger problem, or other problem I want to address is, there's a severe process deficiency here. How can the Planning Board put the city council in a position wherein, if we don't accept something, it really harms whatever they have approved and has these downstream effects? I am actually sympathetic with the potential residents of that property, and even of the developer, but just think about the process by which we've got. So if the Planning Board writes, here are 20 conditions, but all 20 are predicated on the city council accepting them, well, how does that make any sense? And we're what now, a year and a half plus since this project was permitted, and now we're at the end of the road, where the city council often finds itself being treated as a speed bump, that it's our fault, or it's our problem if we don't approve this, and so therefore it must be considered rote, it must be considered done, otherwise you are harming. That makes no sense to me. There are very practical ways to help resolve this. The first one is, these easements can come in, you know, concurrent with the Planning Board's approval, you know, we don't have to wait a year and a half. These all come in at the last minute, hey, we're trying to get our certificate of occupancy, hey, we're trying to close, whatever the case might be, and you don't have to wait a year and a half for that. But I just want to outline for the fact that these are not, this doesn't feel right to me, that our hands are essentially being bound. I mean, think about it this way, to the at-large Counselor's point, if the council were to say no to this, there are very real-life consequences, but how can that be the case? You know, that just doesn't make any sense to me, and I think that it has to be addressed. There have been some strides made in how they write the decision, some of the language that the councils are referring to is as a result of some of that effort and advocacy to strengthen the decisions and make sure they're written, so those are good things. This doesn't, this timing doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Counselor Wallace.
Thank you, President Shan. Just to follow up on that, I agree with the sentiment, and I brought that up at the committee meeting and asked the Planning Director, like, how can we not have this happen again? And the attorney spoke, and there were, you know, some issues there, but, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody who was there, I believe the attorney did say that if we don't pass it, they have another mechanism to get occupancy, that there is a fallback, so...
Counselor Wright.
So yes, I can address that. The Planning Board actually met this week, and they agreed to move the date that is time-sensitive on the closing for the first three units to the fourth occupancy, to the issuance of the fourth occupancy permit. The Planning Board also agreed that in the event that the city council did not accept the easement, that they would no longer require it. So that was done by the Planning Board in their last meeting this week, or last week when they last met.
Counselor Lane.
Just to clarify, no matter what we do, it's not going to impact the residents, right? Is that what?
That's correct.
Okay. Lot of time, nothing.
Further discussion, questions? Counselor Donahue.
Just one more point of clarity, if we do nothing, will there be trees?
Trees already there.
Trees are already there.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Counselor McCauley.
Listen, I want to try to get to a yes on this, but I have to say, the process is broken, and it's broken from the Planning Board through the Planning Office to us. We should not be sitting here saying, if we don't vote for it, the end of the world happens, right? This has been sitting in committee, this has been delayed to come in committee, right? And there seems to be no consequences for anyone but us, and I'm tired of it, right? Because, you know, we sit here and we argue points, and we bring up other points that, you know, are like, oh, by the way, I never thought of that, right? And we shouldn't be sitting here at the 11th hour and 58th minute to be able to do that. So, you know, I want to work on it, but I want to vote yes on it, but the more we talk about it, it doesn't seem like a good deal. But anyway, thank you, I grant it, I'm over.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Counselor President. On the other hand, we have received a pretty strong recommendation from a Planning Board member, whose job it is, the Planning Board, whose job it is to review these things in detail at their, you know, best effort, and bring it to us with this recommendation that we provide the easement. I mean, sometimes I think that we just get into the weeds just to get into the weeds, when we have information that comes to us from a sitting board that has been, you know, in existence for day one, and who understands what's going on, and they come to us with a recommendation and ask us to approve it, I think it's appropriate for us to approve it. Thank you.
Further discussion. Counselor Wallace.
Just really quickly, I just want to apologize, I didn't bring up that fact earlier, it slipped my mind, that probably would have helped our discussion, that there was a fail-safe option.
Thank you, Counselor Wallace. All right. So here we are. Motion on the floor is to approve.
Is.
And it's an order, so not a roll call. So all those in favor of approving Order 394, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of order, I think this is a land transaction, this is an easement.
I would do a roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, correct.
I mean, probably doesn't need to be done, I think it's good practice, so...
Practice.
Motion to approve 394, Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
Recused.
Counselor Dunnehugh.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Motion certainly passes.
All right. Someone want to get Counselor Cameron?
He went home.
I would have brought your computer home.
I was thinking I'd go across the street watching the game.
All right.
Thank you. Did you take care of all the committee items? That would have been really nice of you.
You wish.
No.
Thank you. Motion to approve Ordinance 125.
Second.
Okay, Counselor.
Thank you. Now I got to get my head back in the game here. So this was approved in committee 3-0, we met several times on this matter. This is an ordinance regarding buildings and general constructions standards. It has been updated in your packet, so it would be good for you to take a look at that, there's a lot of red in here. So we had a couple of iterations on this, and we did have participation, Counselor Zede, at least at two meetings, I think, was also along with the committee, and basically there are current Board of Health regulations that say essentially what we're looking to say in the code of ordinances, and the thought is, you know, based on, you know, recent experiences over the last couple of years, that the Board of Health role really isn't for them to deal with water, that we should, you know, per the Building Commissioner, that we should put something in ordinance for this. This might apply to five or six new buildings, new construction a year. We did add some language about additions that you'll see in the revised draft, and essentially this is trying to head off situations where people find their basements in water. So we made a variety of changes, and we did add the piece below, the original submission was what you see, and then there was some language added at the Building Commissioner's request, and kind of wordsmithed in a couple of different ways, and I think there's a little bit of a sense that it's a bit clunky, but it belongs there, because it really doesn't belong anywhere else, so to have it separately might not make a lot of sense. So we did approve this 3-0 for your approval in committee.
Clerk Jones.
If I could bring to the council's attention, did you happen to see the building inspectors email this afternoon suggesting...
I did see that late in the game, and...
I have it.
Yep, if you couldn't mind reading that.
Yeah, so what he's suggesting is, in the sentence that is on the second page, where it says, submit a stamped affidavit of the deep hole test findings, et cetera, when you come down to seasonal high water, high groundwater below, he wants to insert the words bottom up, bottom of slab, and strike the word grade.
So, yes, again, on page 2, the third line...
It would reflect the first sentence. So again, it would read, if his suggestion is taken, high groundwater below, bottom of slab, and strike the word grade after the word slab. Makes sense?
Can you say it one more time, just so I can make sure?
So do you see where it says water below?
Yep.
So after the word below, you'd insert bottom of, after the word slab, you'd strike the word grade.
So it would read below bottom of slab.
Correct.
Comma.
Yes.
Does that seem... Yeah, that is correct, that the Building Commissioner did email late this afternoon.
Motion to amend to accept the Building Commissioners?
Second.
Discussion, I see Counselor Wallace was...
I don't have a discussion on the amendment.
All right. So since this is an ordinance, do we need to do a roll call on the amendment?
No. We can do a voice vote on the amendment.
Do a voice vote on that. That's just on the inserting that, those two words and striking one.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 So done.
Overarching, Counselor Wallace.
Yeah, I just have a couple comments. At the very end, it says, no building permit shall be issued unless a mitigation plan is provided and stamped by a Massachusetts Soil Evaluator and/or a Massachusetts licensed engineer. The certified soil evaluator is for testing, doing test pits and looking at the soils and looking at... and looking at where the high groundwater is. They don't necessarily... They're not certified to design things. Usually, that's an engineer. So I guess I'm... I would almost say the Certified Soil E evaluator shouldn't be doing the mitigation plan. But I'm wondering, too, if this came out of the Board of Health language, maybe the Director Port could answer where that came from?
Director Port, did you hear the question?
Yes, I can answer that question specifically. It came from the building commissioner. He's dropped the line, he was distributed. I understand they can start, but I guess I would have to approach the building commissioner, and then if we originated those two suggested certifications.
Yeah. Okay, I'll leave that thought for a minute. And the other thing, the language at the top could be a little bit misleading. The bottom of slab of any new building or addition with a bottom slab lower than the existing slab. I have Barry Connell coming to mind with some syntax here. I almost would put a comma after building, any new building, comma, or addition with a bottom slab lower than any existing slab, comma. But what this is saying is that if you're already... You have an existing slab that's sitting in groundwater, as long as you don't have anything lower, you can still put on an addition. And that may be okay for residential, but if it comes into commercial buildings or large areas that are impacted, I mean, if your existing slab is already in groundwater, and you're going to build more also in groundwater, it kind of negates the purpose. So I would rather see it just, any construction addition or new be two feet difference, if that makes sense. I'm not saying that's a motion, but something to ponder.
Councillor Zied.
I do want to make a motion to strike the word open GOV.
Second.
I just, I don't think you should put a product name in there, because you never know if you might use something else. But I think we can probably safely assume it'll be online from here on out, so, simple, but need recommended.
Councillor Khan.
Since we're adding minor amendments here, my fellow engineers, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't it be a licensed professional engineer, so we should say PE? Right now, it just says Massachusetts Licensed Engineer, so if we could, friendly amendment, insert professional engineer.
Couldn't we say Scrivener's error on that one?
I'm sorry, what line is that?
It's the last part, just the certification, so, and/or Massachusetts Licensed, and then insert professional engineer.
Just above any retesting show, just before the last one.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So, there's a motion to strike open GOV, and there's a suggested friendly amendment by adding the word professional.
Yes.
You accept the word professional as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Absolutely.
All right. All the... Councillor Wallace.
One more. I would say Massachusetts Professional Civil Engineer, because it could be like a mechanical engineer.
Yes, you don't want us. I agree.
You're adding the word civil?
Civil, yes. Sorry, traffic engineers.
Do you want to add your comments as well?
Yes.
We are in concurrence.
So let's vote on the motion for all the amendments we just heard. All those in favor of all the amendments we just heard, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to approve...
First reading.
As amended, first reading.
As amended.
Roll call.
Councillor Preston.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Wright.
Yes.
Councillor Zied.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
Yes.
Councillor Donahue.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCauley.
Yes.
And Councillor Shan.
Yes.
With amendments, first reading passes.
All right. Councillor Cameron.
Motion to receive and file Communication 444, Planning and Development Net Zero Memo.
Second.
Thank you. So this was brought to committee as a late file in early November. We had one meeting on it last week. We did vote 3 to 0 to recommend this as a receive and file. And basically, so this is a memo from Director Port to Kim Turner. Kim had asked for clarity based on the revision of the net zero ordinance and was looking for some clarity around how this... What were the explicit ordinance requirements? And in particular, what were the policy targets with two current projects, the market landing park expansion and the West End Fire Station? And this was really intended by Director Port just to lend some clarity to that. And we did have a discussion in committee just about, concerns about costs being added as we try to go more towards net zero. But if it's adding excessive amounts of cost to a project, that is going to be challenging. And we should incorporate sort of the long-term total costs of a project over time, including obviously electricity and other utilities. So it was an interesting discussion, and we did recommend receiving file by 3 to 0.
Okay. Further discussion or comments? All right. All those in favor of receiving and filing Communication 444, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve Appointment 353, Andrew Shapiro, 20 Eagle Street, to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Shapiro appeared before our committee last week. We did recommend 3 to 0 that his appointment be approved. I think people may know Drew. He had been on the planning board in Newburyport. He has a background in municipal government, as you can see from his resume. Worked in the city of Boston on emergency management, in Salem on economic development, Lowell on economic development. Currently, he's employed as the Assistant Town Manager in North Andover. Has a fair amount of experience with housing, worked on inclusionary zoning in North Andover, and also a topic near and dear to our hearts, the MBTA Communities Zoning Act that we'll all be looking at. He was on the planning board when we, the city council, approved Smart Growth, I think 2015 or so. So he was looking to learn also about affordable housing. He has a limited amount of experience working with affordable housing trusts. There is one of those entities in North Andover. We did approve 3 to 0 that he be appointed, and I think he'd be a, you know, from the heart about the importance of housing for Newburyport residents, and I think he'd... We think he'd be a great addition.
Thank you, Councillor Cameron. Further discussion? All right. Roll call on the appointment of Andrew Shapiro to the Housing Trust.
Councillor Preston.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Wright.
Yes.
Councillor Zied.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
Yes.
Councillor Donahue.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor McCauley.
Yes.
And Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Appointment 357, Jamison Gagnon to the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Second.
Thank you. Also, same meeting, we did approve this recommendation to you 3 to 0. Jamie Gagnon, I think is probably pretty well-known. His dad and mom were very involved in community service. His dad was a teacher here in Newburyport, also, yes, involved in various ways. Jamie's been in government for the majority of his career, had been in the Suffolk County Sheriff's Office for a number of years, and now he's working for the Department of Criminal Justice Information Services. Really impressive resume. Done a lot of operational things in finance and policy-related. Very interested and connected to recreation needs. Councillor Preston asked why he was interested in the CPC, and he was interested in the diversity of issues that come before the CPC, and he was able to rattle off the four that are covered, which is good. So we felt like he had great experience, and we did approve his appointment as a recommendation to you 3 to 0.
Further discussion? All right. Roll call on the Appointment 357.
Councillor Preston.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Wright.
Yes.
Councillor Zied.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
Yes.
Councillor Donahue.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor McCauley.
Yes.
And Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is it.
Thank you, Councillor Cameron. Councillor McCauley.
Motion to approve Application 115.
Second.
From the committee report, first of all, this came out with 2 to 0 with no recommendation, actually a negative recommendation. That's why I want to start with that. The winter shanties, the shanties are looking for a winter home. And so they've migrated to the back of the custom house along the rail trail. They'll actually block in, box in the rail, front of the rail trail. They'll block the view of the custom house. The applicant wasn't present. There's no insurance form. There's... The request is from December 4th through March 5th. There's no heat, there's no electricity, there's no toilets, and there's no people, for the most part, during those timeframes. We did evaluate it the best we could, playing devil's advocate during our conversation. And part of the answer is that maybe it's time that we say no, and that because as we invest $3 million to $6 million in the waterfront market landing park, it might be time for the shanties to find somewhere else to go other than sitting on the grass. So that's the feeling of the committee. Thank you.
Further discussions or questions?
That was a motion approved, seconded by?
Mm-mm.
I thought I heard a second.
I don't think it was a motion to approve.
I thought I heard a second, too.
Yeah, I thought I...
I didn't hear a motion to approve.
Was it Councillor Khan?
Maybe it was a first.
I missed that.
Councillor Zied.
I'll second it.
I was going to say, I'll second it, too.
I'm just going to throw this out there to the motioner and second, or maybe they wish to make it a receive and file.
Yeah, I would be more than willing to do that and take it as a receive and file.
My second as well.
I think that's a good idea.
Receive and file on Application 115.
All right. With all that being said, do we wait for Councillor Khan? I guess we can...
Yeah, I think we can proceed with her.
She wasn't recusing.
I'll second in her absence if that... Well, there you go.
It's already seconded.
I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies. All right, never mind.
Well, let's take the vote.
So, you want to take a voice vote on that?
Yes. Motion to receive and file, Application 115, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So noted that Councillor Khan was not here.
Motion to approve Order 396.
Second.
Really?
Second, yeah, sorry. Poorly placed yawn there.
I'm reaching ahead a little bit. Communication 454 is a letter from residents. Robert and Susan True have moved in to Cherry Street, and what they've realized is, they live on a dead end, and they realize that more and more people don't know that they live on a dead end, so they constantly pull in, and people are turning around in their driveway, et cetera, along the way. So their request has come in through the Lord Councillor to place a "Not a Through Street" sign on opposite 14 to 16 Cherry Street to help educate traffic, raise awareness, and hopefully alleviate some of the traffic that's going on there. And the request was 2 to 0 in committee.
Councillor Zied.
Could I tack on a motion to receive and file 454 with it? Pardon me?
Yeah, I was going to do the next two all together.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
So...
They went together.
So, yeah.
Hold on. All right. Further discussion, questions, comments?
That's a motion to approve Order 396.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thanks. Motion to receive and file 454, Communication 454 and Order 387.
Second.
Second.
Communication 454 is the letter that I just summarized and talked about, and Order 387 was withdrawn and removed, so we'd like to just receive and file it. Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Wright. Any further discussion? All those in favor of receiving and filing 454 and 387, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor McCauley. Councillor Vogel.
Nothing to report.
Rules.
Nothing to report.
Would you be amenable to moving Order 239 to general government?
Sure. We could ask the sponsor.
Do you like to make a motion?
Motion to... Yes, so moved.
Second.
Second. All right. All those in favor of moving Order 239 to general government, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Good of the order. Councillor McCauley? And Councillor Donahue?
Which one?
Councillor Donahue first.
Oh, thank you. I just want to quickly say thank you to everyone. This has been a really fulfilling, fulfilling year for me. I do take this job very seriously as a job, and I want to thank each and every one of you for being so helpful in helping me to navigate my challenges as my vision impairment continues. I just want to thank you all and wish you all a happy holiday season.
Thank you.
Councillor Donahue. Councillor McCauley.
Yeah, mine was not so happy. I'd just like to reiterate my request for an executive session on the 9th, not only for, on the parks, I think, on the parks report specifically. There's also new information coming in all the time that I think it would be helpful to have legal representation. Thank you.
Right. Folks, you should expect to have an executive session the first council meeting in January.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Wallace.
When will we hear about committee assignments or reassignments?
I plan on talking to you all before the holidays.
Oh, really?
I'm going to try my best.
Thank you.
So that goes, so, yeah. Before, I'll have a conversation with everybody to see how they like this year's committees and preferences on going forward.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.